President.
And Mr. Enos.
Present.
There are no student activities on the agenda. There is a donation of registration for the Conference for the American Association of School Personnel Administrators. That's because Cheryl Butts is their keynote speaker.
Motion to accept the donation.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing in all the favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Then we have two bills payable warrants, one for fiscal 21 in the amount of $31,845. It's an invoice for small equipment repair. And then a general warrant of 22 of $583,367.14.
Do you want them separate or together?
Your pleasure.
Motion to approve the FY21 budget of accounts payable for $31,845.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion, hearing in all the favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted.
Motion to approve the FY22 accounts payable of $583,367.14.
Second to approve with the amount stated.
All right, any further discussion, hearing in all the favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. And Mrs. Moynihan reports there's nothing to update with facilities. A motion to be in order to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted.
Call the meeting to order. If you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare And the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave.
Mrs. Fagan will lead us in prayer.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Okay, roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
On the roll call, yep. Mr. Pulowski.
Here.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagans, present. Oh my gosh. I want to say Steve. Mr. Vera.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
Mr. DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present. Thank you. Can we get a motion for approval of the minutes of February 16th, 2022?
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. We do not have a student advisory committee report this evening. And Mr. DeMello, we have next public input.
Public input. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly requested individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation guidelines will be provided upon signup, and individuals be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who signed the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Mrs. Devine, do we have any public input?
No public input.
No public input, mayor.
Thank you. So next we have the Reed's Collaborative Capital Plan Approval Presentation, Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your packet, I provided you with a PowerPoint presentation that was provided to us by Teresa Craig, who is the CEO of, well, oversees Reed's Collaborative, of which Taunton is a member and in which I am a voting board member at the Reed's Collaborative. She has asked that we share this presentation, which Marcus Gay will be starting very soon. So in your packet, she will review the PowerPoint presentation during the video, which is about nine minutes. We also provided you with a copy of the capital, capital plan that Reed's is proposing, which begins, which began in fiscal 22 and runs through fiscal 26. So at this time, I would ask that school committee members focus their attention on the screen. And at the conclusion of the presentation, what we are asking is for a motion to approve the Reed's Collaborative forming a capital reserve fund and to also approve the limit at which Reed's Collaborative is asking that the capital reserve fund be set, which is $4 million. And if there are any questions regarding the capital funds and the cap, I'd be happy to answer them. And whatever questions I cannot answer, I'll be sure to get those questions answered by Teresa Craig and bring them back to you at the next meeting. So Marcus, whenever you're ready. And Mr. Barata, thank you.
Hello, I'm Dr. Teresa Craig, Executive Director of Reed's Collaborative. I have been the Executive Director for the past 11 years, and this is...
Hi, I'm Lindsay Albernus. I'm the Business Manager for Reed's Collaborative, and I've been there about four years. I want to thank you, the school committee chair, the members of the school committee, the superintendent, and the community for the opportunity to present this information via video. As we come to you with this request regarding our capital plan, I would like to provide a brief overview of Reed's programs, services, and locations. Reed's Collaborative was established in 1974. Your district is one of 18 member districts that form Reed's Collaborative. As a member district, your superintendent is annually appointed as a member of the Reed's Board of Directors. The Board of Directors meet six times per year or more. Various subcommittees meet throughout the year. The special education administrators from member districts meet three to four times per year as an advisory group and engage in work as specific program subcommittees. Reed's is one of 25 collaboratives across the state of Massachusetts. Reed's provides many services to our 18 member districts and provides services to an additional 45 districts in southeastern Mass. and beyond. Reed's programs include Reed's Academy, which serves students with disabilities that impact their social, emotional wellness; Reed's Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, which serves students ages three to 22 who are deaf or hard of hearing. We also provide teachers of the deaf, educational audiology, and speech and language consultative services to students within their districts. The Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program contracts with early intervention for specialized services for infants and toddlers with reduced hearing up to age three. Reed's Clinic provides comprehensive diagnostic and evaluation services, including psychoed s, neuropsych, risks, and personality assessments by our clinical psychologists, CAPS and educational audiology evaluations by our audiologists, speech and language evaluations, and other assessments by our licensed professionals. Reed's District Services provides a variety of specialized personnel within districts, such as speech and language pathologists, OTs, PTs, APEs, school psychologists, school counselors, all for short and long-term solutions, and also our newest family success partnership counselors. Reed's provides professional development, such as mentoring, educator evaluation for administrators, mental health and trauma, and other specific topics on request. We have eight classroom locations in Norton, one classroom at Bristol Plymouth Regional Vocational Technical High School, one classroom at West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School, and the two academy schools located in Middleborough, which we will refer to in this presentation. As you can see, we are very proud of the services we provide to the students, families, and staff of our member districts. Reed's Collaborative is seeking to formally establish the reason and limit for the Reed's Capital Reserve Fund through approval of member school committees. Reed's Collaborative is requesting that each member school committee vote to approve, first, the reasons for the capital reserve, and, second, the limit on the balance. The reasons for the reserve, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, are maintenance and improvement of Reed's properties and leased properties, to provide funding for payment of the lease for Reed's Academy Public Day School location during periods of time when enrollment is below expectations, and to prepare to purchase the location of the Academy Public Day School to eliminate the expense of a lease beyond 10 years. The limit on the balance, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, is $4 million for the reasons identified above. Please refer to the Capital Fund Reserve Regulations, which are included in your handouts on page one. Turn it over to Lindsay.
Reed's Collaborative currently has two capital fund accounts. The Capital Maintenance Fund was established by the Board on January 24th, 2013. The intent of the fund is to provide small annual funding to be used for larger capital maintenance projects to maintain our current facilities. The second is the Capital Building Project Fund. This fund was established by the Board on June 7th, 2018. The intent of the fund is to provide for a new or renovated facility for the Reed's Academy program K through six and seven through 12. A feasibility study indicated that the existing facility would be costly to renovate and expand as needed. After discussions with various financial institutions, the financing for construction of a new building on site was not feasible. I would like to note that collaboratives in the state of Massachusetts are not entitled to building project funds through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The current combined balance held in these two funds is approximately $1,180,000. The two Reed's Academy Schools, pre-K through grade six and seven through 12, opened for students in a newly renovated location on September 7th, 2021. This relocation provided an opportunity to expand available placements to include a DESI-approved preschool classroom, which is already enrolled with students. The new schools have a shared wellness center/gym, a cafeteria and kitchen, designated classrooms for art, music, vocational programming, and makers place/librarys. There are outdoor spaces for field sports and basketball. There is playground equipment that is appropriate for elementary students. This space is welcoming and an equitable learning environment for students with disabilities who are referred for placement at Reed's Academy. In planning specifically for the next five years, Reed's Collaborative Board of Directors has approved a five-year capital improvement plan that encompasses both the existing Capital Maintenance Fund and the Capital Building Project Fund. The five-year capital improvement plan on page one of your handout prioritizes improvements to existing facilities while also allocating funds to provide financial support to purchase or continue to lease 44 Bedford Street for students in Reed's Academy. The details of this plan over the next five years do not require a school committee approval but are provided on page two of your handout to support the reason for the capital reserve fund and the limit on the balance. This approval requires action by you as the school committee members of Reed's Collaborative and a signature of the school committee chair. Reed's Collaborative is seeking to formally establish the reason and limit for Reed's Capital Reserve Fund through approval of our member school committees. Just as a reminder, Reed's Collaborative is requesting that each member school committee vote to approve, first, the reasons for the capital reserve, and, second, the limit on the balance. The reasons for the reserve, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, are maintenance and improvement of Reed's properties and leased properties, provide for funding for payment of the lease for Reed's Academy Public Day School location during periods of time when enrollment is below expectations, and to prepare to purchase the location of the Academy Public School to eliminate the expense of a lease beyond 10 years. The limit on the balance, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, is $4 million for the reasons above. The 18-member districts of Reed's Collaborative have provided consistent support and vision over the past 47 years. School committee members and superintendents have sought to ensure specialized intervention for the students with disabilities who require services provided by the highly qualified staff at Reed's Academy, Reed's Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, Reed's Clinic, Reed's District Services, and within the many specialized services provided to school districts. Thank you for taking this additional step to secure an equitable learning space for the students attending Reed's Collaborative now and in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Cabral, do you have anything further, or would you like one of the motions to be made for discussion?
If the board members are ready to make the motions, I think it's appropriate. If there are any questions that you would like me to attempt to answer, I'd be happy to answer, but if not, we can go right to the motions.
It sounds like we need to do two separate motions.
That's my understanding, is that correct, two?
Yes. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So a motion would be in order from my colleagues to approve the formation of the Reed's Collaborative Capital Reserve Fund for the reasons listed on slide three of tonight's presentation, not to exceed $4 million. That's, that would be the appropriate motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. And the second motion?
I think we just did all of one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we said we were doing two. Okay.
I just did all of one, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your packet, I provided you with my superintendent's report. So during February break, we were able to host approximately 230 students for vacation school during the week of February vacation. I need to commend Mr. Barata, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, all our principals, and our department heads for the work that they took on to organize within a very short window. And I know I won't do this justice as far as the amount of work that Mr. Barata put into organizing this, organizing this vacation school at eight of our schools, again, 228 of our students. It was like Mr. Barata put on his principal's hat and was organizing vacation schools back at the Freeman Middle School, at the Martin Middle Schools. So I want to thank Chris for his hard work and also the staff and the administrators who helped contribute to what was a very successful program and a model that we'll look to replicate moving forward in the future. So funding for these programs were secured through a competitive grant. So we have secured, for February vacation and April vacation, we have secured $480,000 to educate our students, to provide them with academic support and as well as enrichment activities. So the April vacation school, for those listening at home, will take place between April 19th and April 22nd. The purpose of the Learning Academy is to extend and support the students' learning and understanding in math. And this was, these were students that were intentionally targeted and recruited to participate in these learning academies. Class sizes were capped at about 10 to 12 students to make sure that the students received the individualized attention that they needed. The program was geared or centered around our illustrative math curriculum, which is evidence-based and highly, in high-quality instructional material. And they were also provided with some supplemental materials that were vetted and prioritized that were placed into the hands of our students. And all students were supposed to receive 20 hours of explicit math instruction. However, we had to cut the program short because of snow day, and there also was a scheduled holiday on Monday in which students were not able to attend. But during, during the week, students received five hours of intensive math instruction during the day. And the students' day was broken up in, in addition to the math instruction, they also participated in outside and indoor games. Students went on walks, students participated in yoga. There was work, or artwork, and there was also a social, emotional, team-building component and activities incorporated into the program. Our students were also fed thanks to the food service department, the amazing food service department here at Taunton in the Taunton Public Schools. So in all, 228 students participated in the program on very short notice. We'll be beginning recruitment very soon for the April Academy, and we look forward to a very robust learning opportunity for students that is targeted and focused heavily on math. I do have some talking points that are listed and some talking points that are not listed that I would like to share or at least update the committee. I'm very proud to announce that our boys' basketball team, I believe still ranked number, ranked fifth in the state, we're going to be hosting a game on Friday here in our gymnasium. So any school committee member interested in attending, please let me know, and I'll make sure that you receive passes to attend Friday's game. We're hoping for a deep tournament run from our boys' basketball team. Also, we were very pleased to learn that the basketball team, sorry, the hockey team qualified for the state tournament. So very proud, very proud of our hockey team for qualifying for the state tournament. Also very proud to announce our wrestling team, which had probably one of the more successful seasons that we've had this winter. The wrestling team placed fourth at the MIAA Division One State Championships. Last night, I was able to participate as a judge during the DECA mock trials. So the DECA mock trials were in preparation for the March 10th, 11th, and 12th state fair, and then from state, I believe they go on to international, so we're very proud of our DECA students. And I believe 53 students will be participating at states come next week. I also want to remind the committee that you're going to be receiving an invitation for the Ruth Biloli All-City Music Festival, which will be held in the Field House this year. So we're looking at approximately 730 students, between chorus and band, that'll be performing over two nights. And when I met with Mr. Beltrum yesterday to talk about this upcoming event, he believes that we're somewhere between 12% to 15% of our student population, we have about 8,000 kids, somewhere between 12% to 15% of our students are participating in the performing arts. And that's something that we need to celebrate here in the Taunton Public Schools. Not only do we have robust athletic programs, we also have robust performing arts programs. I'm proud to announce that tomorrow, we're going to gather 70 administrators for our all-admin meeting. Our all-admin meeting will be held at the, in the Parker Cafeteria, where we will, we will receive some legal updates that are relative in education. We're going to conduct a diversity, equity, and inclusion book study, and we're also going to participate in some team building and some activators to help bring our group closer in this work. I'm also proud to announce, oh, I'll save this one for last. I also want to make the public aware at home that the high school performing arts program, they're going to be performing, or they're going to be conducting the play Wizard of Oz. So we're putting an all-call-out to any elementary school student, middle school student, may be interested in serving as a munchkin. As of now, we have 48 munchkins, and munchkins will not be turned away. So if anyone is interested at home in serving as a munchkin in the upcoming play Wizard of Oz, please let your principal know. And last but not least, it's been a long two, two and a half years with regards to COVID. I met with Nurse Manager Regan this morning after she met with Heather Galant, who's the Director of Board of Health, and we were pleased to announce only six positive cases in the city of Taunton. So I believe the city of Taunton and the school, city leadership and the school department leadership deserve a round of applause for all your hard work. It's been a tough day. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Administrative business, do we have any business with the staffing report?
No, Mayor, a motion would be...
Receive and place on file.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Fagan. And I just...
Motion made and seconded, all those on discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I need to be recorded as present for my wife's appointment to last week's academy and also her retirement notice appearing in this report, so I can be going on.
Okay, thank you. Motion made and seconded.
Seconded by Mr. George, I believe. Will be making the motion amended, right? We'll include that with Mr. Fiore's request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment. That Learning Academy was great, my son did attend it, and I asked him about, you know what you get from your kids, he said the lunch was amazing. But I asked him more about the activities and the math that he was doing, and he really did have a good time. And it was longer than the actual school day, so for my son to be at school during his vacation and still wanting to go back and be upset that Friday was canceled due to weather, it just shows that it was really an amazing program, so I appreciate that. And thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion and second on the floor regarding the staffing report.
Yes.
Superintendent Cabral?
Yeah, I just want to comment, and I typically don't do this with retirements, but I'll make an exception in this case. So Mrs. Fiore was one of the first teachers I met when I started working in Taunton. So I got to work with Charlene as a teacher, and then I got to work with Charlene as an assistant principal principal, and now I'm the superintendent. And Charlene was an amazing, is an amazing teacher, she's a true educator. I can only imagine the pain and the long restless nights of putting pen to paper and writing that notification of our intent to retire. So Charlene will be missed, I've enjoyed working with her, and I've also enjoyed, you know, Charlene's support throughout my years in Taunton. So please, please let Charlene know that she will be dearly missed, and when you think of an educator, Charlene comes to mind. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted, one present. Subcommittee reports, Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance and Law Committee met this evening with myself, Mr. DeMello, and Mr. Enos. There were no student activities to replenish. We received and approved a donation from the American Association of School Personnel Administrators for the tuition to their Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Summit. That registration was coming for free because Dr. Cheryl Butts is the keynote speaker of it, and that's her tuition. We also received, we approved bills payable, first for fiscal year '21 in the amount of $31,845. That is an equipment purchase that was delayed in delivery. And then fiscal year '22, a regular warrant of $583,367.14. And with that, the committee adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Is there a motion to accept the report and recommendations?
So moved.
My colleagues, we should split out FY21 and FY22, if you don't mind, okay?
I moved, so you want me to split?
Split FY21 first.
All right. Want to do FY21 first?
Yeah, can you just make the motion, please?
Yep. Motion to accept the FY21.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, on discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. So it was mentioned in the public forum during the readout of the warrant that there was an expense of $31,845. It's listed as a small engine repair. It's really not a small engine repair. And Mrs. Moynihan, if you want to better explain what that was for that amount of money?
It was a purchase of two snowblower tractors that we had purchased last year, and the company has small engine repair in their name, so that is why it was referenced that way. So it is not a small engine repair, it was a purchase of snowblower tractors for our larger complexes.
Great, thank you so much, Mrs. Moynihan, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So motion made and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted.
And I also want to make a motion to accept the FY22 budget thing, the warrant, sorry.
Second the motion.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. Thank you. Long Range Planning and School Properties Subcommittee, Mr. Vera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, February 17th, the Long Range Planning and School Properties Subcommittee met, myself, Mr. George, and Mr. Enos. Also in attendance was Superintendent Cabral, Chairman DeMello, Secretary Fagan, they were present but did not participate, as well as Food Service Director Glenn Motta. The purpose of the presentation was to discuss man-at-school-based health center location and to discuss food service composite materials feasibility analysis. Mr. Motta is the Assistant Food Service Director. He was there to discuss the costs and also the space analysis for Food Service Department to conduct a study on installing dishwashers and also... The primary premise of the discussion was about placement and about cost. His findings were that half of the schools had space for the dishrooms and half of the schools did not. The schools that did have space were Taunton High, Friedman, Martin Middle, and Chamberlain Elementary, as well as East Taunton Elementary. The schools that didn't were Parker, Mulcahy, Elizabeth Pole, Letty, and Taunton, all turn... The schools that didn't were Parker, Mulcahy, Elizabeth Pole, Letty, and Taunton Alternative High School. The dishrooms in Taunton High School would be at the loss of the grill area, which is very popular with the high school student base. The cost to add the dishrooms in half of the schools would be roughly around $2 million. That's what he estimated his analysis to be. The other thing that was discussed was going from traditional lunch tray to biodegradable lunch tray, and his findings were that that would add an additional cost of $202,000. Other concerns that Mr. Motta had were, you know, how effective students were going to be able to separate, or staff to separate food and the trays, and then we would also have to contract a company to come take the trays away, and, you know, there would be a lot of logistics involved. So Mr. Enos made a motion, which was seconded by Mr. George, to dismiss the item from the action list, and it was primarily due to the cost, and there was also concerns with the availability of space and the loss of the grill, again, which is very popular and serves as a function line at the high school. So after the motion made and was seconded, it was unanimously voted with the Subcommittee to take it off the action item list. The next thing that was discussed at the Subcommittee were possible locations for Manette Base Health Center. Three locations that were discussed were all on the Taunton High School and Parker School campus. Mr. Cabral reminded the group that the concept's in its early stages, and that there's still a long process in order for Manette to get the approval, and there would still be a lot of work to be done with the building department and other stakeholders in the community. One other thing that Mr. Cabral was going to do is he was going to grab the memorandum from when Morton Hospital also had a student-based health center at Friedman. That way, we could review it and come up with some ideas of possible agreement if things do come to fruition. No motions were taken, and the meeting was adjourned at 4:42.
Thank you, Mr. Viera. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the report.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. On discussion, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. As Chairman Viera did state, I was present but not a voting member, I just want to, you know, tell folks that the numbers that were put together by Mr. Motta were in-depth. They weren't just thrown together. There was a lot of research done and a lot of work put into it, so the numbers were real. It just wasn't that we're not interested. It's not the right time to do it, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. None opposed, so voted. Unit A Teachers Subcommittee, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes, the TEA Subcommittee met late this afternoon with the administration to prepare and strategize and plan for upcoming negotiations with the Taunton Education Association, which is scheduled for Monday, March 14, 2022. That's my report.
Thank you.
Oh, if I didn't mention it, it was myself, Mr. DeMello, and Mr. George were also in attendance with the administrators. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the report.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. None opposed, so voted. New business, Taunton High School graduation date.
In your packet, you'll see an undated letter and an unsigned letter from Principal Scott Holcomb, Taunton High School Principal Scott Holcomb, regarding the change in the high school graduation from June 5th to June 4th at 11:00 a.m. So the high school graduation has been changed to Saturday, June 4th, due to the observance of the Jewish holiday Shavuot. This letter will be dated and signed and sent out to all the seniors at Taunton High School effective tomorrow, but I wanted to make the school committee aware. Unfortunately, unlike last year, we're going to have to hold graduation indoors because the turf field and the track will be under renovation, under construction. So this will be an indoor graduation, but we are looking at possibly hosting overflow in different locations or different areas in the high school. So hopefully, we'll be able to accommodate all family members versus limiting family members to graduation.
Thank you. Proposed school year calendars.
Just for informational purposes, as we are still waiting for feedback from several of our unions, so Mrs. Perry put together her final schedules as the Director of Student Services and Transportation. So you'll see it's a very traditional schedule that we've seen in the past. I, again, I thought it was beneficial to have a two-year calendar approved, so I would recommend that once we get the feedback from the union and we bring this back to you in a more formal approval process, that the committee consider approving a two-year calendar versus a one-year calendar. So we'll have more information in the future.
Okay, thank you. And there's also budget workshop dates included.
Yeah, just as I saved the date, Mrs. Devine and myself and Mr. DeMello and Secretary Fagan wanted to make the board aware that we have tentatively scheduled April 13th, Wednesday, April 13th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. as our school committee budget workshop.
Okay, thank you. And so those are all informational and no motions made? Okay. All right, thank you. Unfinished business, action item review? Any items on that? Mr. Devine?
Yes, Mayor. So as we heard from Mr. Viera, a motion would be in order to remove from the action item list the item of November 17, 2021, which was referred to Long Range Planning and School Properties Subcommittee, Food Services Composite Materials Feasibility Analysis.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. None opposed, so voted. There is no press here this evening?
Another one on their unfinished business. I know both Mayor O'Connell and Mr. Laura had occasion to visit with Mrs. Mary Bliss in connection with her 100th birthday, wonderful newspaper coverage, but I wanted to report on the greeting card front that the campaign to get her at least 100 birthday cards resulted in almost 350.
She was thrilled.
And, yes, so, thank you, Mr. Fiori. She was thrilled, and her family was thrilled. She is just a pretty extraordinary woman, so it was fun to spend some time with her. Okay, thank you. So no press time, and can we get a motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. None opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.